Testing one, two, test, test, one, two. Okay, you can go ahead.
Hey, welcome to the City of Cheyenne City Council Work Session, June twenty first, twenty twenty four. We have engineering updates and we will start with city engineer Tom Cobb. Go ahead, sir.
President Escobal, members of the city council, I certainly appreciate you spending a Friday afternoon with me. After going through this a few times and wanting to make sure that I gave the message the same to all of you. I decided this would be the best form to really give you all of my updates for basically all the goals that you set. And the original seven, I I've I touched four of them. So I thought this would be the best form to do that in. So that's why I wanted to deliver it to you this way. So I appreciate your time. To start with, I'd like to go through those council goals and then I'm going to start with Fifteenth Street Rail Experience, the Reed Avenue Rail Corridor. Talk a little bit about the surface water management and the Belvoir Public Ranch, I guess, Belvoir Ranch Public Access. Then questions and you can stop me anytime in between if you'd really like to. Then I'm going to go through our summer twenty twenty four sort of updates that I gave you a little bit at my budget session. And then some previews of coming projects in anticipated twenty twenty five. So with that, I wanted to back up a little bit because there's there was some, I guess, things that occurred during either on the diocent and some other forms with with the Fifteenth Street Rail Experience. So I wanted to set the table for what the original plan one did and what it outlined. So when we focus on this one, it was really just to set the table. So it was a grandiose plan and it it set a long range of sort of some some expectations of what could occur. Now, with that being said, it did look at to try to integrate the city community visitors and properly those visions of that corridor. And there were a lot of different ones. I mean, parking on one side, vision of the rail cars on the other, a plaza concept, a pedestrian connection, one-way traffic, a lot of things were brought into that plan. It was it was to evaluate the street sections to maximize the parking and provide optimal vehicle pedestrian and bike circulation. Its third part was to enhance the corridor in the depot area by creating these areas to display those historic. And I I'm not I'm using the term improperly, so I apologize, Mr. Escobar, whether historic or just older cars and and how we could potentially repurpose those vehicles. It also was to try to integrate the Greater Cheyenne Greenway along Fifteenth Street to improve the connectivity to the pedestrian paths and those bicycle facilities in the downtown area. And last, but not least, its goal was to improve the aesthetics and safety of the quarter by improving fencing, lighting, and creating opportunities to display additional artwork along that area. So with with all of that, again, there's some pretty expensive bills that come with with the vision that was created. So what what I was attempting to do was what I called the master plan refinement. And what was brought in front of council was actually the construction drawings, and there was some confusion on that. The master plan refinement was something I had already contracted with D H M with. And the reason that D H M was chosen is because they're the folks that are working on the Reed Avenue Rail Corridor. So what we were trying to do is to bring those two plans together, okay? And 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 this refinement that I called it is really to build on that previous work that was done by Plan One where we could use it and integrate and create continuity and consistency. And that and that connection of connectivity between the Reed Avenue Rail Corridor, Fifteenth Street, the West Edge, and the Depot itself. So I hope that clears up from your perspective where we were trying to go with this. We're not rebuilding the document. This is going to be more of a master plan layout that shows those two plans coming together, including also the pump house wetland area. So three components, again, with the West Edge, all coming together on what we a diagram that basically outlines in a simple format of how this should look, so it all ties together. So with that also, I wanted to increase or minimize the parking impacts because there were some significant impacts that were suggested in the original Plan One Master Plan Update. So with this one, we we wanted to take a different approach and ensure that those impacts were minimized. We also looked at a more of a fiscally constrained approach with the vision for potential future opportunities because we have limited funding here and but we want to be able to deliver a product. We wanted to focus on the E D A grant obligations that we already had in forward that were part of the rail cars that we had. And then we wanted to provide additional public stakeholder engagement. Now, this is where I want to say, we haven't got any of this done yet. We've started on a napkin sketch, taking everything together. And in the future here, I anticipate within the next month, they'll come out with their public involvement and start putting these, put the put the businesses back and say, we've advertised what we think we want to do with this and then move it forward. So to reiterate, there was some confusion here as well at the D D A board meeting the other day. Nothing has been done. We we are simply putting all the pieces together. They've got survey data to be able to make this a real plan, and we want to use the actual size of the vehicles that we have. Then again, because there was some missed disconnection of how big these rail cars actually are. There was a plaza concept showing on the other one that wasn't physically possible because we have eighty-foot-long cars and we have about seventy-eight feet of room. So that's been modified. We're looking at more of a linear approach. If you look at more at the center picture that I have shown here, this is sort of a concept layout of where we're headed. It's going to be linear along the corridor itself. In fact, it's going to try to match the old rail line that used to actually come into the depot area. So I made it small on purpose so you can't see it because I didn't want you to get an idea that there was anything finite. But the parking lots are then to the south, the street is up here to the north, and the rail cars are going to fit just on the outside of the street. So we're going to have to move the curb line about three and a half feet and will still get the twenty-foot access on to Fifteenth Street for fire and others that we can get vehicles through, okay? And then the only part that we're suggesting at this point to even lose any parking is that that there's some handicap spaces that are inset over by the depot. And again, where Sadie was shown, that's the we're using that part of the original master plan to put Sadie in that area, okay? So we do lose three or four spaces. Now, with that being said, I said there are two components to this. The second component then is the construction design and bid documents, which is the contract that came in front of you. Phase one of that, which is where we are, I'm only at phase one. We're we're trying to do documents for the whole thing and lay it out, but we're going to focus on, again, phase one, which is the E D A rail cars, which is the business car that you see at the picture at the bottom, the caboose that's showing at the top. Those are the two now that are tied to the grant. Then we also have the business, another business car that we're looking at placing there. And then again, because there's a separate funding source, Old Sadie, that engine would then also go on to this quarter. And some of the money then could be used simply for that to help defer some of the cost. Okay. To kind of give you a timeline and an understanding of the bid packages. So the overall summary, we're talking, I talked about this master plan refinement. And then there are four bid packages that are separate that are part of different funding sources. I've got the the bid pack one, which is the abatement. That package is now complete. We're going to get it upstairs to T J and we're sending it off to E D A. The red ones are part of the E D A grant, so that's bid pack one. Bid pack two is the is the renovation. And renovation here, there's some different definitions. So to be clear, when I say renovation, this is more focused on the outside of the vehicles to make them presentable from the outside. The abatement has been done on the inside and some outside features to get rid of paint that is lead and and also obviously asbestos that's visible as well. So the renovation again is more for the outside. This is not a rehab of the inside. I think that has been looked at in different ways, but there's just not enough money to be able to do that in the small grant that we're looking at. There's only seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars available in that E D A grant. It was never intended as a full renovation. So bid pack number three is the site preparation, which was the contract that came in front of all of you that D H M is working on with me on this one. Again, we're focused on phase one. And then bid pack four is the transportation package where we get the vehicles that are out of this one and Sadie to get them on to Fifteenth Street. So there are four different pieces, again, several different funding sources, including, as I said, the seven hundred and seventy-three thousand from the E D A grant, which includes actually six hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred dollars of grant money and then a hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred dollars in match money. Then we also have another four hundred and eighty thousand dollars that was brought in front of you as a part of a separate agreement that the Cheyenne Depot Museum like let us use then that came from that charitable contribution from the David. And I'm I'm going to butcher this name, the Donohue, a friend of the number eight forty-four Fund Restoration of Old Sadies. So that's that money. Now, here here's where we we talked about a little bit about this before, as I've updated you before. But additional funding of approximately eight hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars is probably going to be needed here to complete the site preparation and implementation because none of that was accounted for in the grant that was received from the E D A. There is no site prep here. So anything I have to do and why I said at the beginning that I looked at a fiscally constrained approach is I don't have a number yet on what this is going to cost. So I want to minimize that phase one impact. And so really, right now, and the the cat is going to be a little bit out of the bag. I'm focused on the area in front of Gunslingers to place two of the larger vehicles. Sadie would go in that one curb inset over by the depot and the caboose would set actually back by the fence line on Kerry. So it's visible for someone if they wanted to make a business in there, they could see it. So we're really looking at redoing Gunslingers Plaza, which then wouldn't impact any of the parking other than the three stalls I talked about in front of the depot. So haven't finalized it yet, but that's the initial concept in order to be able to do this. Because I knew you were going to wonder, how am I going to not eliminate parking? Well, we're redoing basically Gunslingers Plaza. And then we're looking at a pedestrian connection between that plaza area and the depot to connect those two together. So that sidewalk component would then be done that. But everything west of that could not be done as a part of this project this time. It whether it's done by Reed or a different funding source, again, I don't know. But I'm looking at how we can move forward and trying to stay with that eight hundred and fifty thousand figure and to be looked at as we as we move forward. Now, to give you an idea of the of the timeframe we're looking at, just just so you know, what the site prep needs to be complete by October of twenty twenty five, that obviously is next fall. So we're going to have to move rather quickly to get that site prep ready. That's the renovation needs to occur and be completed at approximately that same time. And then the transportation is going to take quite a bit of time to get them back over here because you have to get a track window from the Union Pacific Railroad, they have to get a special permit from the F R A. So all of this is going to is going to have to be kind of timed and and properly done through as we move forward. Now, our project manager that that you gracefully let the mayor have is going to assist me with these two packages in particular. He's looking at taking the renovation portion and the transportation portion. My bandwidth is zero right now, so he's going to assist me in moving this forward. I've taken the abatement portion and the and the site prep. Okay, um, next, next item, we're going to talk a little bit about Reed Avenue Rail Project. So an overview of where we stand and kind of where we were, the P E agreement, as you all know, was that was executed in August of twenty-three, so last summer. The D H M Design Group has submitted concept designs to the B N S F for review and comment and an approval, and they did that in December of twenty-three. We originally received some comments back from the Burlington Northern Santa Fe, and those comments were pretty dramatic. And so we haven't shared it outside yet. There was a it was one of those things where, as we've talked about before with the railroad and Mr. Escobar, you know, the first the first answer is no, always no, because they use their standard book and they say, this is no. Since that time, the diagnostics team came to visit us. That was comprised of the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Representatives, their consultant team, the Union Pacific Railroad, Y dot, our members of my team, the D H M and Quandell Group, and they all met together and basically went through the entire corridor, walked it, found what was wrong with it today, what they proposed for the future, and sort of looked at that integration and how it looked on the ground, right? So I'll I'll talk about that in a minute, but it went pretty positive. We're we're waiting now on that team to come back with what we call meeting concurrence notes. It has to go through their consultant Olson and the B N S F. And that's where we are with that holding pattern right now. So a little review of the diagnostics overview, some of the action items that they identified for immediate improvements. So first of all, they wanted us to update and refresh all the pavement markings, stop bars and railroad crossing markings that are on the corridor. Those have been there and outdated for quite some time, wait, obviously way before my time. That's an easy one that we can fix and we've got it now on a list. They want us to remove and reset some signage that they they thought was misplaced according to standards. We can take care of that as well. They wanted us to add some additional no park signs. And in this specific case, they wanted it a hundred foot from the center line of the track each direction from every one of the crossings. And the interesting part about this one where I said they usually just say no right from the start. So they wanted us to limit all parking a hundred foot. Well, obviously, and you're going to think in your brain, that's going to affect affect Westby's Edge, other pieces with a hundred foot from the track is pretty extensive. So when Mr. Bay, my representative out there, basically had conversations with the team and they compromised and said what they would do is restrict parking for basically semi-truck trailer parking a hundred foot from the track. Because realistically, they just wanted visibility. And so what what the talk was is a car doesn't really affect the visibility of the crossing itself. So they 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 moved that along. So again, it it's always no at first, but then we work along the corridor and 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 see it on the ground and and we came to a compromise. And again, as I stated, it was an overall positive meeting, and I'm cautionarily optimistic that the designs proposed that B N S F and the Olson staff were actually on board with. And you all have seen those concepts before. And basically, we're looking at moving the maintenance of the tracks to the west side and then the pedestrian corridors basically to the east side of the track. Okay, that's 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 the basic premise of where we're headed. We also reviewed with them some potential full closures, and those those were at Eighteenth and Dillon Avenue at this particular point. We talked about Dillon before, it's off the corridor, but again, any closure to the railroad is important to them. We talked about the bungalows that those those are actually the signal controls then for for each of the crossings and getting those moved all to the west side, and they're on board with that. So all positive. Now, s- some of the negatives that did come out of this, and I'm I'm going to show you on the right. Some of the things that they identified that were problems are basically over by the Can Man area. It's just south, it's on Twenty Second there. So on Twenty Second, the debris that's now setting within the corridor, this and again, the B N S F looks at this entire area from building edge to building edge as their corridor. So all of that debris, they want cleared out of there. Now, the other one that came up in this was, and this is a this is a little bit more sensitive, I'll say this out loud, is the access that was granted before my time onto the corridor with a site plan to a business here just off of Lincoln Way. So right now, they're parking vehicles, business vehicles, and using that as a primary access point to their business. And there are garages that are actually inside here where where they access to their equipment and storage of the pesticides and other things that they utilize. So again, we didn't get involved in anything other than discussion with B N S F about this, but it was clearly noted by them that these were going on and these two occurrences they they didn't like. I don't know what's going to happen with this. A letter may be sent directly from B N S F. We we simply don't know. Next steps moving forward with Reed. Or as I stated, we're waiting for final comments from the Burlington Northern Santa Fe on the notes that we did with the diagnostics team. And we're we're going to coordinate with the B N S F and our team together. There we're going to update the plan as required from those comments. We're going to provide additional stakeholder involvement moving forward. The consultant's ready to do that. They're going to complete the design then and then find and pursue additional funding opportunities. We're still waiting for one right now. Renee and our team, our consultant team, put a raise grant together to look at the pedestrian underpass underneath Lincoln Way. We haven't heard back on that grant yet, but we're hopeful. And again, they're still looking at other opportunities. Now, this is the this is the bad news. The balance less the incomertures for the West Edge, which is the Reed Avenue Rail Corridor, as of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, from the Sixpenny is two million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars. The total estimated preliminary cost for the project is approximately fourteen million. Therefore, we have approximately eleven point seven million dollars in deficit funding that we still need to secure for the final improvements to be implemented for the entire plan that we're looking at. And a little sketch above, just so you see on the right, of showing you sort of just a basic idea with the with where it's at, with the with the west side being the maintenance road and the east side being the pedestrian corridor. West is to the bottom of the page, east is to the top. And then the the schematic rendering below is the concept plan that was submitted with the raise application for the pedestrian underpass that would go underneath Lincoln Way. Next one, the Surface Water Management Program. Obviously, our primary purpose was develop and create a stormwater division. That that therefore would maintain the city to, in order to for that purpose is to maintain the city's stormwater system for proper conveyance, flood control and pollution control. You know, maintain, plan, and improve public detention and water quality facilities in our streams. Ensure compliance with the management of our of our programs set forth in our National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, which is for separate stormwater system maintenance. Meet the requirements set forth by federal agencies like FEMA. And then obviously, and improve and document our community rating system. And as if you may remember in the workshop that I gave for this one with Mr. Bay, our community rating system is basically the insurance rate that we get. So the better we do at documenting and making improvements to our system, the better rating those folks get that have insurance. So this is a really important aspect of people that are on a floodplain, so they can get a lower insurance rate. We also want to look at developing a fiscally responsible budget and potentially a funding mechanism fair and equitable for the government body to consider. Current requirements and needs, obviously, as we talked about in that last workshop, far exceed our ability to fund and maintain our existing facilities. As we said, we were roughly about a million a year is all we get. It it's simply not enough to do all the maintenance of the four hundred miles plus of storm sewer that we have. We've got three hundred and sixty miles of streets, we've got four hundred plus miles of storm sewer. And again, the detention ponds, I don't even want to go into that, were well over four hundred of those themselves. So it's it's as we've said before, it's an overwhelming task. So looking at the potential funding mechanisms, we've kind of taken, we we kind of gave you a preview of this before that we were looking at sort of a different method. And at that time, you heard me say something about equivalent residential units and a lot of language that got awfully complicated. And so we kind of drew a line in the sand and restarted this a little bit. I met a consultant, this is really by chance. I went to a West Conference, which is the Wyoming Engineers Society, and I listened to a presentation from some other jurisdictions that had been doing the same thing that we're trying to do, create a funding mechanism for for stormwater and and how they were actually developing it. And what what came out of this was, is that we we were looking at this before, but they had done some enhancements. We had looked at looking at the total impervious area of an of our city, right? And then you would pay a share of that based on your impervious area. But our our lockup in that before was, is how do we do this? Is it such an overwhelming task? We've got fifty square miles of 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 area. And how how do you make this work and how much how much manpower do you put into it? So when this workshop came about at the West Conference, we found that there was a new logarithm that had been developed by some pretty smart people, a lot smarter than me, that actually uses A I to look at and find impervious area using aerial photography and and infrared imagery. So then we could actually look at a rate or a fee that was based again on the actual parcel impervious area, not some equivalent that we were looking at. So there'd been some enhancements. So we started looking at this and we then engaged another firm to look at this at a pretty low relatively low cost. Pickett came to us and we had him do this. So that's been in the works behind the scenes. So after right now, the preliminary results are as follows. I'm going to, we have two hundred and thirty-three point one million square feet of impervious area citywide. That is pretty incredible. At the time that we presented our budget to you, and again, this is where we can change all this. The fiscal year twenty-five water, surface water mitigation budget, we had about six point one million shown. And that was in the approved budget that we looked at that was unfunded. So based on those preliminary estimates, okay? And this is pretty easy to do because you can take your budget, and again, this is where the flexibility comes in. You choose the budget, you divide it by the total square foot of impervious you have, and guess what? You get a dollar per square foot of what it would cost someone in, whether they're a business, a residence, or whatever it may be. Now, that figure then is basically point zero zero two one eight cents or dollars per square foot per month, okay? So and what you see on the screen is my house. So I put my house up as an example, based on a six point one million dollar budget. I have three thousand, six hundred and forty-seven impervious square foot in my parcel. So I would pay seven dollars and ninety-four cents a month. And this is just an example. And again, it's a linear relationship. It's so simple and it's super fair and equitable because what you're paying for is your impervious area. And it picked up, if you look really carefully in the diagram that you see, I've got, I've got slate stones that are back here. I've got a retaining wall in my backyard. It picked up all of that. The A I picked it up. So that's that's this is pretty impressive stuff that's come out lately. And and again, it's the fairest way to look at this as far as assessment or whatever you want to call it because you're paying based on what your square foot of impervious is. Next steps, I'll go next steps. We're verifying and finalizing the Q C Q A of the impervious data because obviously we, much as I want to trust A I, if you've ever driven one of those cars with that, we want to check this. So we're doing a pretty extensive look at checking how how it relates to each of the parcels and doing some hand calculations and checks. We're also verifying and finalizing potential rates with the consultant team and looking at that budget developing and refining a proposed ordinance for the governing body consideration. We do have another detailed work session scheduled for July twelfth, and that'll go into detail on this. And you'll have the consultant team here then as well, and you can ask them questions at that time specifically about about all of this. And then we want to continue our public outreach program. Again, we we are underfunded and that is the truth. We can't maintain what we have now. Okay, last update I think is the Belvoir Ranch Public Access. So obviously, the purpose that I looked at this and specifically as as trying to move your goals forward is really to develop a public recreational trail master plan for really access to the big hole and and the Newman Reservoir. First, you know, look at designing and constructing a Belvoir Ranch Trail System and then design and construct a public access roadway, parking lot, restroom, trailhead and water system. And really, you just wanted me to get you access out there and access to the big hole. So the map on the right is sort of, you've seen in, in different forms what that map is. It's the original master plan that was developed for the trail system itself. And that includes about 26 miles of trails and limited to the west side of the Belvoir and the south southwest corner. Okay, with that one as well, where we broke this right now into, into separate bid packages. So bid pack one was the roadway, the restroom, the parking lot. There was a universal one mile trail that, that connected this, a kiosk and a picnic shelter. And that was funded through the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Grant or W O R G. And then also the Belvoir Recreation Fund. It included 608,420, which included 486,736 of grant money with 121,684 match would came, came out of the recreation fund. So this bid pack one, and I'm going to just get you the better location if I can point to it. This is sort of the inset of the entire area on that southwest corner. This bid pack one is isolated. This is the universal trail that I've highlighted here. This is showing it on the larger map of the whole 26 miles. The one mile trail is here. And then the access road itself, and this is hard to see. It comes off a harem and I can barely see it utilizes the existing road. There's a two track that comes through here and then we tie into what would the turbine roads that are already existing out there to try to, again, be fiscally responsible and utilizing most of the roadway network that we already have out there. And then from that going up one of the trail, it's basically a windmill road that ties into where the parking lot is. So it's right through here. Bid pack two. This one is actually going on first right now. I should go back to a second on where we're at. Sorry, I didn't say that very well. We, we are, next steps for bid pack one is we're trying to coordinate now with Laramie County Fire District. And specifically on the roadway with our, our initial plan, as I indicated, is to be fiscally responsible. So we were looking at the existing roadways out there are approximately 16 feet wide. We had requested with the county and the fire districts to go to an 18 foot road for access for those apparatus. Right now, the county is wanting us to do 20 feet. Obviously those costs do go up. We do have a meeting next week with all of the fire district chiefs in the county and the, and Laramie County staff to go through this. So I hope there, there's a compromise that we can come to and move forward. We need to look at completing the, I guess, that the county site plan process is where, where we're at right now, which includes this roadway width and determining it. We need to finalize those construction documents. We need to bid that project. And now based on where we're at, because of sort of these discussions with the county and getting kind of caught in their site plan process, we're probably now likely looking at either late fall this year or early spring and summer for that bid package, which includes the roadway restroom, parking lot, et cetera. So that's where we are with that one. Bid pack two, this is the good news. We're already out and I know that you've heard rumors about this, but we've got 6.7 miles of trail going in right now. And our construction costs were 219,673. You can see where the location of this is related to the big map. There we go. This is again, the Holtz 26 mile trail system. This first component here is that 6.7 miles with the exclusion of the universal trail that I talked about that's on bid pack one. Sort of a bigger inset picture, what I'm showing you down below is actually now a trail that's been built and finished to date. You can see what it looks like. And then at the top is the whole layout, a little more detailed of those locations, which gives access to the reservoir that's being improved by the Laramie County Conservation District. It has all sorts of vistas, including visibility of the big hole and other components. So this is pretty exciting and it's going to get opened up. That's the good news. And again, this, the construction schedule right now is to be completed by November 30th of this year. I think they're going to beat that deadline. We are looking at a bid pack number three, the money that we still have in the recreation fund for additional, another 6.7 miles that would also be constructed next year in relationship to the restroom itself. For those additional trail construction. One of the important components that I need to bring to all of your attention is one of the things that, that, that's, that's not part of my task, but needs to be looked at as we move forward. And I, and I know the mayor and I have had some conversation about this and others, but we need to look at how to formalize a maintenance plan for the upkeep of this trail system. Cause obviously, you know, I'm really good at building stuff, but we, we got to look at maintaining these and keep it in a condition that we all want it to be. Okay, I wanted to talk a little bit more about the big hole access. And specifically, we talked about a bridge at one time. We talked about utilizing the existing structure. I, I just wanted to give you a picture of, of where this is at in the process. Right now, we've gone back to a submittal that was done before my time in 2018. We're looking at utilizing that existing culvert. And you can see, I was kind of showing a picture on the right of what's location. It's kind of hard to see upper right-hand corner. So it's, it's right now, it is a drainage culvert. Okay, it is being used as, as, and, but it also is a department of, it's a DOT or Department of Transportation actually numbered structure, which means it also carried vehicles because it accessed from one side of the pasture to the other before we ever purchased the ranch. So it was being used as, 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 as access by vehicles. So it's a 16 foot structural plate pipe. It's a big structure. It's a UPRR mile post 539.41. And again, it has a DOT number, which I've listed down below here. This previous submittal in 18 was rejected by the, by the railroad. And so because it was looked at simply as it's a drainage structure, we don't want you to use it because it's supposed to be used for drainage. So I kind of took a step back as I try to do sometimes and, and maybe look at things as my grandpa used to say, I'm kind of the keep it simple, stupid kind of guy. So I looked at this and said, wait a minute, how can we take this and, and change the way this looks to everybody? So what I did was, is I said, why don't we put a detention facility upstream of this that attenuates flow? So a stormwater detention facility upstream that then curtails the flow that gets to the S actual box. And then in conjunction with that, in the diagram that I show you down below, I'm showing you sort of a concept where I actually install a box culvert or a pipe that goes underneath. The, the structure is buried by almost four and a half feet. It's dirt, it's 16 foot structure, has about four and a half foot of dirt on it. So I thought, wait a minute, can we put a drainage pipe in the area that's not being used for drainage? Make it the drainage course and the top part could be used by our trail system for people to utilize. So that's the concept that we've met with the railroad about. It's an, it's like I said, it's a new approach. I've met with the UPRR. I have individual meetings with them every quarter that we've talked about this concept. What I need to do now is to come up in front of you with another PEA agreement, just like we did with Burlington Northern. And then complete a preliminary design to look at this concept in more detail. We, we do have in front right now, the consultant we had to do the trail system. We did a drainage study that was previously done using some different methodology. And I'm also, I'll get out of my engineering head here. Basically, we changed the way we looked at the drainage using a different method. And when you do that, it changes the amount of water that you think you see. So every model is a little bit different, every methodology is. We used a less conservative approach. And what I mean by that is we used one more that we would utilize today, not, not 50, 30 years ago. 30 years ago, we used a rational method and that's what Mr. Vincent had used when they saw this before. So what it does is it inflates all of the drainage numbers to make it look much larger. And it was great 30 years ago because what our job as engineers was do is to carry water in big pipes, right? That's our, that was what we were supposed to do. And now today we look at things much, much more fiscally responsible because we have to. And so we look at numbers that are more finite. And so these, these drainage numbers go down. So that's what, that's what now we're going to submit to the railroad. And I, we're trying this new concept, they're open to it. I've had many different discussions with, with the railroad to date. And I'm, I'm not telling you, again, I'll say cautionarily optimistic. But I think, I think it's, it doesn't hurt us to try this approach. It significantly saves a lot of money. We were looking at four and a half million dollars for a bridge. We're looking at about a million dollars for this. Now you're always going to say to me, because you told me Tom in the past that the only way the railroad looks at something is because they see benefit to it. And yes, so here's what I had to do to make them see benefit to this. So what I did was I told them that we would take this structure and extend it. So that's the cross section that you see, you take a cut through the railroad. That's what you see is a, looking down the railroad track. So what I did was, is then I would extend the structural plate pipe all the way to the edge of the rideaway, which is going to provide a protection zone. So if cargo falls off, it protects them, the railroad, their insurance themselves. And then we would also move the maintenance road to go over the top of this new pipe that we extended. So that's the benefit to the railroad and that's why they're looking at this differently. It isn't because I changed the way that I looked at hydrology. It's not because I did anything else. It's because they saw a safety benefit for us to extend their structural plate culvert. And it's the protection of, of them and their facilities. So with that, any questions that you'd like to have on me? Sorry, it was so convoluted and long, but hopefully it gave you at least an update of those. And two other things we have left is quickly with construction projects.
Okay, Tom, so we're not bouncing around all over the place. We'll take the updates, A, B, C, D in order. And then we'll start off on the left with Councilman White on the 15th Street Experience. Any questions?
Mr. President, through you, thank you, Tom, for the information. A lot of it is been requested by many of us over the course of the last few months. With regard to what you said was the master plan refinement, the one that's being done by DHM. Is that is that a public document? Can, can people access that document?
President Escobal through you to Councilman White. Yes, sir, when it's complete, it will be. But right now, what I, what I've stated to you is it, we don't have it documented yet. It's just, it's a concept. So I've verbally explained it to you where we are, but when they finish that, it'll be out for public document.
And when will it be finished?
Sir, we expect it within the next month. And again, that we go through public process, sorry.
One more question, Mr. President. Tom, just to reiterate, and you said this very clearly during the course of your presentation, but nothing has been completed on this project.
President Escobal through you to Councilman White. Yes, sir, nothing's been completed.
No further questions from me.
Councilman Labor and anything on 15th Street? Just trying to come down the dais.
Well, all right. Yes, Mr. Cobb. There's, I have several questions about 15th Street. Shall we start with the gunslinger square? Are they going to go somewhere?
President Escobal through you to Councilman Labor. Sir, the, the way that again, there is no, nothing's been done with the plan, but the concept was to not move them anywhere that we could enhance the area and in, enhance the area and utilize the cars in that area to not affect the parking. So that's the concept based on what we know today. But again, they're working on this concept. And the only reason that I wanted to tell you this is because there's so much misconception out there of impacts to parking, that I wanted to be clear that the way that we're looking at this again is not to impact the parking, not to affect the gunslingers, but to enhance that plaza area to both benefit to display of these potential rail cars and, and them.
And so in that original document plan, there was references to uses of those rail cars in the interior of the rail car, not the exterior. I think you mentioned that what the concept today is the exterior. So that Plan One concept called for all sorts of possible uses in those cars. Is that under consideration?
Councilman, I'm sorry, President Escobal through you to Councilman Labor. Yes, sir, it is. So what, what I tried to say, which I didn't do very effectively is we want to build on what they did. And it's not looking at this as, that it's, it's just not today. We're not, we're not looking at the renovation of the interior of these vehicles today. But what I forgot to mention was, is we're also stubbing out water and sewer services to each of these business car areas for the potential for them to have that access and renovate those cars in the future. But it's not part of what we're looking at today.
And so finally, I believe you mentioned the term sidewalk in regard to the pedestrian area that runs from along 15th Street. So is that going to be a sidewalk or is it going to be a 10-foot greenway section?
President Escobal through you to Councilman Labor. Sir, we're going to try to get it to maximize the, the width that we can. Right now it looked at on basic aerial imagery because they're collecting data, as I indicated, that we'd at least get an eight foot way and hopefully at, at least a 10 foot minimum. We're trying to get 10 feet. But we have to fit rail cars and the parking lots altogether and minimizing no less than 20 foot for roadway width. So we're hoping to get the 10 foot. And again, based on what we do know, we think we can, sir. But until we actually have the concept and refinement done, I can't affirmatively tell you for sure.
And so would that pedestrian path sidewalk, a, a plan on being run to the north or the south of the rail cars? Would it be nearer to the street? Or would it be behind the rail cars?
President Escobal through you to Councilman Labor. As I, as a sketch indicated, the rail cars would be closer to the street than the sidewalk would be on the south side of the rail cars between the parking lot and the vehicles. And again, that's only based on a concept and they haven't actually completed it. But once they do, I will happy to give it to all of you to see as the data that we need, meaning survey data, so I know exact distances can be determined.
Dr. Aldrich on 15th Street.
Thank you, President Escobal. I was just curious, can you tell us roughly the cost that of the cost to set the table as you referred to and to refine the plan? The total cost that we've spent so far on these plans or, or planning to spend on these plans?
President Escobal through you to Dr. Aldrich. Dr. Aldrich, the original plan based on what I remember that was run only, we were the fiscal agent only was roughly 100,000 for Plan One. Now, please don't try to, it's not exact, that's an approximate amount. And the amount to do the refinement is approximately $40,000. Now that's a cost not to exceed contract. And again, as this has changed through, as I, I have to elaborate a little bit. Again, it's, it's a work in progress. They're going to lay out the entire thing in a concept view and then refinement specifically for phase one. Okay? With, with the separate documents for that.
A follow-up question, President Escobal. I'm curious as to the additional need for 850 to 1 million dollars. Are you thinking that that would be a potential six penny sales tax ballot? For the future six penny sales tax ballot? Or where do you, where do you foresee us coming up with 850 to 1 million dollars just to finish this concept?
President Escobal through you to Dr. Aldrich. I think with the timing that we're looking at for this, for this EDA grant, I, I think that you all, there's some hard decisions that have to be made. But I think we have to look at this funding coming out of the six penny downtown because we won't make it. That's just the reality. I'm hoping to get those costs down. And again, the concept for this phase one is to minimize that amount of fiscal impact. So once we get that done and refine it moving forward, we'll have better costs. These were estimates based on really just napkin sketches at this particular juncture. That's all I have. I have, I'm using the data that Plan One utilized. That's where the 800,000 came from and I put a buffer on it. And I'm just being honest with you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dr. Rennie? Probably the only thing that I would add is that certainly when we have our goal setting session in August, that there's going to be some more follow-ups, you know, with these questions. And And, uh, of course, the railroad experience is going to entail whether or not we bring that big boy locomotive downtown or where, where we put it, the funding sources with that. And, you know, we talked in the past about if we're going to really truly take advantage of Cheyenne's railroad history, having a skyway that would go over to the old roundhouse and the steam shops is certainly be something that we could capitalize uh, huge tourism dollars on. So and with all four of these, certainly there, there's tourism dollars that we can capture going forward. So let's go to Reed Avenue corridor, Councilman White. Oh Jen, did we have any other members online?
I just have Councilman Johnson and he said he doesn't have any questions, so.
Okay, back to you, Jeff.
No, uh, Mr. President, I don't have any questions on Reed Avenue at this time.
Councilman Labor, Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. So knowing that the discussion that has been held with the B N S F is at a higher level and that you, the recent walkthrough was, uh, beneficial, I guess, is what I understand. Are we going to have this summer, any, any kind of, uh, ability to communicate where we are to those property owners and the public? Well, like, uh, I, I know there's a lot of interest and certainly we're kind of late in this, but, um, what sort of public outreach and communication is planned for the next few months?
Director.
President Escobal through you to Councilman Labor. I don't have that in front of me, sir, but obviously the consultant team, I just summarized it, that this public involvement would move forward once we got definitive comments from the B N S F. So the concept could be refined and then presented. So what format that's in, we'll have to talk to the consultant group. Um, I don't have that information in front of me, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Aldrich, anything on Reed?
Uh, President Escobal, um, through you. So as you were going through your bullet points on the Reed Avenue, project, um, there had been a bullet that said that there was a concern over the amount of use in the railroad right of way. Was that the reference, was that in reference to the Can Man in, uh, situation you described? And also the business that's, uh, got parking and garages going on in the right of way?
President Escobal through you to Dr. Aldrich. Yes, ma'am. So sometimes I get a little off script, so I don't go, I don't use the slides as well as I should. But yeah, I gave you all the information. That's what it was intended to be. There was some more documentation that I didn't mention to you. Probably, I'll just say this, um, there was, uh, a gentleman dragging a mattress down the corridor at the time that the diagnostics team was there and they were concerned, uh, about the fact that we do have this homeless population that unfortunately is using the corridor itself. So one of the things that came up in the diagnostics and why they liked our new concept was because when we fence the rail tracks from the pedestrians, we actually provide additional protection. And that's why it was really, I, it was a very sad moment, but it was a very key moment because B N S F and their team saw how the quarter was being used today and that we would be making it safer by containing and fencing out the, the rail tracks. So thank you for the question, ma'am.
Um, my, one additional question. You said that that project is estimated to run 11.7 million dollars short of being able to be completed. Uh, do you foresee that as being a six penny sales tax ballot initiative?
President Escobal through you to Dr. Aldrich. I, 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 I don't have a complete answer for you. I'm hoping that we can secure some of the funding through grant opportunities, as I mentioned about the raise grant and some others. But yes, ma'am, I, I think it might be the only way to do this with that amount of money.
Thank you.
Dr. Rennie?
Mr. President, just to follow up on my colleague's comments, I, this was initially a six penny ballot initiative and I think that's the only way it ever is going to be completed. And those of us who were around when we first put it on there, um, perceived that it would continue to be a six penny ballot initiative. And ultimately that's up to us.
Yeah, agreed. Councilman White, anything on surface water drainage?
Just one comment, Mr. Cobb. I really appreciate the efforts that's been made on this. I know a lot of us are very interested in this subject, uh, because of the health, health and safety need. Um, but the formula that you presented wasn't, is an interesting new twist and, uh, one that frankly I appreciate because when you're going out to our constituents with a proposal such as this, it's a lot easier to justify when, when you're able to present it that way. So, and it shows that we're all, I mean, this isn't just a, a city thing. We're all going to be part of this collectively, uh, in order to contribute to the safety, uh, of our neighbors. So I appreciated that. Oh, no questions.
Councilman Labor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cobb. You've come a long way and certainly it is appreciated. When do you conceive of having a final product that we could take to ordinance?
Director.
President Escobal through you to Councilman Labor. Sir, I think, um, I'm going to tell you this, just it, I think you're going to, we'll wait till the work session on the 12th. Um, but I'm confident that if, when you're ready to move forward, we're ready for you. We're that close. So by July 12th, I anticipate that at least the draft of everything that I've discussed to you, it'd be in a format capable of moving forward, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Aldrich.
Uh, President Escobal, um, through you, Engineer Cobb, we had an opportunity, several of us yesterday, to meet with an individual to talk about some of the filters that are, um, throughout our downtown area, the 86 filters that we have that are to be emptied twice a year. My understanding is that that is written into our MS four and that is something that, uh, we're being held accountable to by D E Q. Is that correct?
President Escobal through you to Dr. Aldrich. Y- yes, ma'am, we do have to do that. Um, Vicky's crews do, do, do actually empty those bins. Now, it's, it's complex because these things are very hard to access. And the vac truck that they use, it, it, it gets stuck inside of it. Sometimes they have to dump the contents out. We're, we're looking at different methods moving forward and, but I, to answer your question directly, it isn't those in particular that the bins are there. They don't have to exist. It's just another tool in our toolbox that we can utilize and we're hoping those designs improve in the future and we're able to access them a little bit easier.
Um, and lastly, I wanted to just ask, um, if we were not using a filter of some sort, would we be in violation of our MS four?
President Escobal through you to Dr. Aldrich. No, ma'am. So a lot of the inlets downtown have, um, basically a sump built into them. So we used to leave sort of a space and what I mean is between the bottom of the pipe, the invert of the pipe to the bottom of a box or a, or a manhole, there's a distance there. So it would actually store water and it, and, and sediment that comes out in the wash, so to speak, when it gets washed through the, the, the structure. Now, the trouble with that is, is that it, you know, obviously it creates mosquito, um, ability for them to breed and, and eggs, they're, lay their eggs there. So there, there, there's, there's benefits and, and, and to both methods. But we have some of that downtown for that. And then the other part of this is we now have the area which well, all, um, for lack of a better term, that the wetland area in the pump house area that does filter through a different process, um, before it dumps into the creek from the downtown area. So no, we would not be in violation, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilman Labor.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that, uh, pump house wetland idea. Last time I was down there, it was dry. That seemed, uh, very unusual. It's never been dry before that I've ever noticed. Can you speak to that?
President Escobal through you to Councilman Labor. I don't know off the top of my head. I haven't been down there this year yet. Um, I will look into the matter, sir, and get back to you.
Thank you.
Dr. Rennie, anything on surface water drainage? And Councilman White on Belvoir?
Onward and upward.
Councilman Labor and anything on Belvoir?
Thank you. I'm glad we got away from that ridiculous bridge idea. And there's something more realistic. Uh, I really look forward to, uh, what might occur. I don't know if we'll be able to ride it, uh, by November, but, uh, this long anticipated matter will be quite satisfactory to the public, I'm sure. Thank you.
Dr. Aldrich.
President Escobal through you. Um, I appreciate all of your efforts on that and making sure that, um, and the creativity of using that numbered culvert to, um, be an access point. Um, I would like to suggest, President Escobal, that, uh, we, uh, look at having a work session with the, um, project manager to talk about some of these issues. I still am trying to struggle to understand why two items have been given to the project manager and Mr. Cobb continues to carry the load on four of these that are pretty heavy lifts.
Well, he'll be there at our work session, uh, August 21st. Dr. Rennie, anything on? Okay, uh, give us our updates on the 2024 construction for.
Okay, President Escobal and members of the council. So just, just to quickly go through sort of our construction 2024 updates. So overall, um, all our projects are proceeding well. They're on schedule, on budget. And the projects remaining to bid, I've had some various issues and I'll, I'll cover those as we move forward. The three that I've highlighted here, this is similar to the slide that I showed you in my buzzin', budget presentation. And now I can't read it on my own slide, so give me a second here. Can't see it on the screen. I think I need more glasses. Yeah, so the, the first thing is, well, I, first I wanted to tell you that the number on the right is the amount of work we bid to date, which is for capital construction, 17 million, 280,000, 399 dollars and 89 cents. We had a projected budget of 20 million, 606, 533, 58. And Dr. Aldrich, just for your benefit, sometimes I don't know why these cents come up and I try to get all the, our estimating people to go to the nearest dollar, but it just comes out that way. So I.
That would be a, that's a Councilman Royble issue, actually.
Okay. Um, so the, the three that I, the four that I highlighted here that are, have been not out to bid yet are, first of all, the Vanda High pedestrian rehabilitation. That's upstairs right now. So the ones in stars are advertised and out for, for bid now. And that includes that. And then we're also looking at one of the radar feedback sign installations. That won't come in front of you, but we are looking at then next week installing two of the radar feedback signs directly on Gardenia. I've met directly with the neighbors. I have the location with them. They've been involved in the process. They understand where we are and our constraints. So I just wanted you all to know that. And then the last two on the list, Story Boulevard and the Belvoir Ranch Trailhead. As you saw, the Belvoir Ranch Trailhead is stuck in this, in the county site plan process. I have a, a meeting with the fire chiefs next week, so hopefully get that resolved and get it out to bid. And then with the Story Boulevard extension, what's waiting on this one is, and I say Story Boulevard extension, but it includes in the county summit drive as, as well as the Story Boulevard extension, which is part of the Whitney Ranch, to the north side of the Whitney Ranch that you all graciously allowed me to purchase and move forward. We needed still to get an agreement with the county and that's what's slowing this up right now is we have an agreement that's an M O U that will come in front of both governing bodies, defining the terms of our shared responsibility of the summit portion and the other one. And then also I then have been courting with the landowners on the county side, including Mr. Stone, who was here the other day. Um, we are working at having to get easements on some of these properties to be able to do the construction of the roadway itself. Um, we are very hopeful that this is going to proceed and hopefully we can go out to bid no later than late this summer. So that's where we are on those two items.
Good questions. Uh, let's start with Councilman White coming back this way on the 2024 construction updates. Councilman Labor. Dr. Aldrich.
President Escobal, uh, is it accurate that we are planning to raise Summit Drive or the extension of Story Boulevard by two feet?
Director. Sorry, President Escobal through you to Dr. Aldrich. So with the, the explanation, which is very specific to Joyce Stone, I know specifically where this is coming from because, um, I've had this conversation with her and Mr. Stone. So the issue is it's two feet in front of their driveway because we had to raise the grade of call to get to match into College Drive with lesser of a slope to tie in now because we're looking at a much higher vehicle count that needs to be able to see way better than it is now. Right now it comes up at about a 14% grade. We, we can't build roads to 14% grade. Um, we need no more than 8%. My preference is to be under five, but compromised right now. It's 6%. Now that flattens the grade out by college, but it also, as I indicated to the Stones, the ditches on the side of the road are affected by the street grade. So in order to carry more water, because now some of this is going to be paved in asphalt near college, that it has to be able to run in the ditch in efficient ways. So we looked at no less than a half percent of fall in the ditches on the outside, which is where we ended up with the 6%. So we're going to meet with them, Dr. Aldrich, as we move forward. I have a meeting scheduled with them next week. So we're going to continue that dialogue, but no, for the, to answer your direct question, it's not two foot over the entire thing, just in isolated locations and only to accommodate safety and drainage.
Thank you.
Dr. Rennie? Yeah, it's good. You're 25, uh, construction projects.
President Escobal, just to finish up, I wanted to also give you a little bit on the maintenance side. So just quickly, I'm only going to tell you, we've got all our maintenance work out this year. It's all full going and full bore. And as you saw, we've got everything ripped up in the city. So it's good. We, we are covering a lot of ground this year. Um, the three things that are highlighted at the bottom, this is the first year, because I have a new traffic engineer on board, we're able to put out some significant work with epoxy paint and thermoplastic pavement markings, both at the schools and other conditions around town. It's wonderful. Um, but we're spending quite a bit of money as we're anticipating those projects coming out to bid here shortly. And you can see those budget numbers aren't small. We've got about 226,000 dollars in epoxy paint, about 400,000 in thermoplastic number one and another 500,000 just to update all the schools. So this is a significant amount of money as we move forward. But again, I'm playing catch up from predecessors. And so now I do have the people in the right places and we're making progress. Just wanted to quickly update you on that.
Very good.
Okay, quickly with next year's or 2025, um, anticipated construction projects. Um, just to highlight some of the maintenance work that we have planned, we're looking at a Dell Range overlay, which is pretty significant from Marble all the way to Sunset. Okay? This is well overdue. It's going to still be a mess on Dell Range. I apologize. But again, we have to spend the money now before we lose the streets. As I've indicated to you many times, we can't afford to wait. So that's going to happen here next summer. Um, as long as you give it that blessing when a contract comes in front of you. We also are looking at the Converse South Leg, which is from Lincoln Way to the Roundabout. That also is in dire need of maintenance. And then just I put this one on the list because now we've got the alley rehabilitation in the D D A area. We're now looking at the four alleys and, um, President Escobal, there are, that change order will come in really quickly here. He's about finished. So you'll all see that. From the capital construction side, just three of the highlights. I'm looking at finally getting the Fifth and Deming Bridge Replacement Project constructed. I'm looking at Dell Range Boulevard Phase Two, which is Van Buren to East College Drive. I'm staying just short of College Drive. I'm looking at that as a third separate project that would be in 2026 or 2027, depending on funding. Last, we've got the windmill signal replacement and intersection project. I'm adding a second left-hand turn lane to increase capacity and for the ability for the buses to get out of East High School. I think we're going to make significant improvements there. Drainage maintenance, we're looking at additional dredging projects next year and vegetation management, which would include the goats. Um, and last but not least, looking at some design projects for highlight, um, the Dell Range Boulevard at. Um, and last but not least, looking at some design projects for highlight, um, the Dell Range Boulevard at Yellowstone Road Project, Converse Avenue at Dell Range Boulevard, which is from Mason Way to Dutcher Field entrance. And then the 19th and Missile Drive intersection and drainage conveyance update. So whether that's a bridge culvert, and we're looking at that one is that intersection reconfiguration. And we're looking at some potential grant opportunities. Right now, this is for the design that we received from FEMA, but there's some additional money we're looking at, trying to build that here in a very short order of time, no later than 26. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have on, on updates for those.
Councilman White.
Thank you for the, thank you for the, Mr. President through you. Thank you for the clarification on, uh, the upcoming change order that we'll be seeing. I know that there was some initial confusion on the alley maintenance, uh, project, but, uh, very happy to see that fourth alley added, which is a concern to all of us.
Any other questions on 2025 anticipated construction projects? All right, uh, got a lot of large irons in the fire. It's going to take a teamwork effort from everyone on the governing body, everyone in the mayor's office, all our directors and our friends at the county going forward. Look forward to hearing what you have to say on your next work session with us. And of course, we got a goal setting August 21st. Keep that in mind. Uh, with that, we are adjourned.